Tonight's regular meeting of the Tiburon Town Council. It is Wednesday, August second, two thousand and twenty-three. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember here. Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
Mayor Ryan.
Also here, thank you. Before we get to the regular agenda, I'd like to begin to invite the public to make any comment, an open comment period for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So Madam Clerk, if you could instruct attendees how to do that, that'd be great. Thanks.
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to take a comment. You can find the raise hand button under webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I will invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you. And as a reminder, if anyone comes up to speak, please just state your name and then you'll have three minutes to talk. Do you see anyone? And is there anyone in the chambers who would like to make a comment? Please come to the podium and speak. Introduce yourself and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Shadon. I live at two seven nine Cecilia Way. I also sent you all an email about an issue that I think is very important. The reason I've come tonight is so that I can reiterate the importance of this to public safety. It has to do with the municipal code and that there is no restriction on planting a very tall tree that will grow into the PG&E power lines. As we all know, PG&E has identified this as a danger even in urban areas. And in my neighborhood of Bel Air, they've come around and cut very ugly leaves in all the trees that are growing into the overhead electric lines. I recently, due to a neighbor that is planning a teardown and attending the DRB meetings, I did bring this item up to, you know, in both a letter to the DRB and in a public, in the three-minute public session. And this item was not discussed. The applicant did respond and say, well, there's already trees there that are that tall. But when those trees were planted, as we know, in the late fifties for the development of Bel Air, we didn't, we didn't know about climate change or fire danger, any of this, you know, it was just plant a nice tree in front of a home. And so I think this is an item that I realize you all cannot discuss tonight, but I I'm hoping that in some, whatever the procedures are for doing that, that you will discuss this with Mr. Chanis and with, and he then with the planning department about how we can implement that. The Tiburon Police Department has weighed in on this and said that, yes, while they cannot restrict someone from doing that, they don't have the power, they don't think it's wise. I have, I am in contact with PG&E and when I get a definitive answer from them, I will be coming and presenting it to you all because I think this is a public safety issue. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody online who'd like to make a public comment on something that's not on tonight's agenda?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the open comment period and we'll go to the regular meeting. Our first item tonight is an interview for vacancy on town board and commission. Tonight, we're interviewing Brian Davis. Is Mr. Davis for us?
He is. He is online, so you'll see him on the TV. He's coming in right now.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I've just joined as a panelist.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Davis. How are you?
Hey, Jack, how are you? Brian Davis here. Thanks for having me. Sorry, the lighting is a little bit dark. I'm on vacation in Costa Rica at the moment and don't have complete control of the lighting here, so.
That's all right. That sounds like a good trade. But so we appreciate the application. And if you could just start us off with sort of just a brief introduction, I know it may be a little bit duplicative based on what you submitted, but just in terms of who you are and how you come to see the, your involvement in the ranch and what got you interested in this.
Yeah, so I guess first and foremost, I'm a community member here in Tiburon. I have three children in the the Reed Redwood system. At the moment, my youngest is entering the fifth grade. We've been very active members of the community, including the ranch, and really appreciated the enrichment it brings to all of our lives. I personally am the Cub Master for the Cub Scouts here in Tiburon, and we have a very large and active group. So again, I I see some, some some synergies around youth development here. And so I'm inspired by the programs that we do have at the ranch and want to be a part of it as much as possible. Professionally, I am a pharmacist by training. I currently work at Merck. I'm a Director of Medical Affairs and I oversee clinical research for various medicines to treat viruses. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I would love to open it up to the fellow council members. If anyone would like to ask Mr. Davis a question, I'd love to hear.
Sure, Mr. Davis. Since you're so involved and I guess involved a bit in, in the joint rec activities also, is that right? Am I getting that right?
Well, I think my involvement in the ranch and recreation is largely around my children's participation in the ranch. I personally have been a volunteer coach when they were younger. And then other than that, my volunteer coaching has been with CYO. I'm a very active member of the Cub Scouts here in Tiburon.
So do you have a sense of what joint rec does?
Um, yeah, so joint rec is everything around programs for both adults and for children and for tennis as well as everything else that the ranch offers.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, hi, I just wanted to ask if you had any specific thoughts about any specific actions or changes or continuation of things that you'd like to see if you were appointed to the joint committee? Anything in specific you'd like to see done?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I really enjoy the music programs. I think more of those are better. And I think that we could, we could grow that. It would be an enrichment. Also for tennis, I know that tennis program has been established for some time, but it would be nice to see some further growth of that to have, make it more similar to what the programs are at Strawberry or HRT. And then possibly any additional things that we can do in combination with the library. I know that, I don't know if that kind of thing is possible, but certainly the library has been opened itself up to the community and they've expanded their capacity. And so I think any, anything we can do in combination there would be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you for joining us from Costa Rica. I don't know. You know, you're on vacation, but I'm going to extend this invitation to you anyway. Later, we will be making an appointment to the Ranch Board. We have other applicants. But we will, we have an agenda item later to make it, to try to come to a decision and make an appointment. So if you'd like to stick around, you're welcome to. Otherwise.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And at this point, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. Are there any members of the council who'd like to remove an item from the consent calendar tonight?
Yes, I would like to remove consent items three and four.
Okay. And then is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on any of the items?
Seeing none.
Okay, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items one and two as presented.
So moved.
Seconds.
Second.
All in favor can just say aye.
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 Great, thank you. So those two pass. So let's move to items three and four, Councilmember here.
Yes, since I was not present, I will not be voting on these minutes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion or comment on those? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, great, those two pass. Thank you. So now we move on to the action items. And action item one is the appointment to the town boards and commissions. Do we have a staff report this evening?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, the council is considering making one appointment to the Joint Rec Board. You interviewed one of your candidates just now, Brian Davis, and the other applicant you all interviewed at the June twenty-first council meeting, Albert Yu. Those are your only two applicants, and he'll be taking the remainder of an existing seat, Mr. Jerry Resin. After many, many years on the Joint Rec Board, he's ready to retire. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item yet? Do we have anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment on this item?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment and we'll bring it to the board for discussion. Does anyone want to start us off?
I would like to start us off, not in any direction. Because I was not here for the interview with Mr. Yu, I will not actually be voting on this.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
Sure. You know, joint rec does a lot more than, than the children's programs. They have programs for adults and seniors, community-wide, zumba, yoga, Pilates. They actually participate in, thank you, in the staging of events from the wine festival to the Halloween carnival, the Santa event, five and ten K runs. It's a broad spectrum of recreation. And as, as rooted in the committee, the community, as Mr. Davis is and fine applicant, I am drawn to Albert Yu because of his broad experience in the hospitality industry. And he has a financial background too. And also marketing, which would be great. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Wellner. Do you want to? Yeah, so I guess I would only add, I appreciate those comments and I really enjoyed meeting both candidates. I hope that that they both end up volunteering and participating in the town because I think they're both perfectly qualified. Vice Mayor Fredericks, would you like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Yu?
It's my pleasure to make a motion to appoint Albert Yu to the Ranch Board.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so all in favor of appointing Mr. Yu, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that item passes three zero. And again, thank you, Mr. Davis, for participating. I hope you come back and interview again because your involvement with the community has been fantastic. We'll move now to action item two, which is about the Citizens Advisory Panel. Do we have a staff report on action item two?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very briefly. First of all, welcome back, everybody. Good to see you all. It's been a while. As you all know, the Tiburon Police Department is committed to a policing model that includes significant, significant community engagement. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, as part of the settlement of the Yema case, council adopted a policy, two oh two, which I provided the copy for you today at the Dais, and I also gave a copy to the media representative in the back of the room, sort of outlining the structure of the proposed Citizens Advisory Panel. You'll see on the back page of the policy in section under the composition of the panel. Section C, let's see here, make sure I get this right, C six, the, the policy indicates that the panel will include at least one member of the Tiburon Town Council. And then down on section D, it indicates that the Tiburon Mayor will select members of the town council to serve on that panel. So tonight's item is for council to consider or to express interest or consider what council member may want to serve on the Citizens Advisory Panel, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this? Curiously, procedurally, like, does it happen by motion or do I hit the gavel? And how does, how does it actually, given it says that the mayor up makes the appointment?
Well, I think it's on the agenda tonight for you to get information from your colleagues of, you know, what they think about it. You can either do that through a straw poll or a motion that, you know, is their recommendation to you, however you want to do it, but ultimately, it's your, it's your appointment.
Thanks. Are there any other questions for staff?
Yeah. So is the mayor precluded from being the representative to the advisory panel?
I'm sorry. Was that? What was, was there a question?
She's asking if the mayor can appoint himself.
The answer is yes, the mayor can appoint himself.
He's not precluded. He is. Okay, gotcha. Any other questions? Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this agenda item?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Is there anyone other than me who's interested in doing it? Because I am interested. I think it'd be cool.
I want to see you appoint yourself.
But you have to ask from one mic and accept from another.
That's what you have to do.
Or we could make a motion that, an advisory motion that the mayor appoint himself. And I so make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that one.
Okay, everyone in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
So what did you tell me to do? I, so I will, I'll be the council's representative on the Citizens Advisory Panel. Perfect. I can make that declaration.
Have to say I appoint myself.
I appoint myself, yes.
Okay, and you have to thank yourself.
That guy. Thank you for interviewing. Your qualifications were pristine.
But he didn't switch mics. I don't know. We have to ask our town attorney if that's a legitimate appointment. And why is there a hand in my, in my head? Does anyone know? There's a hand up there that's on my head, but anyway.
Looking for a high five. Uh, we will move on now to public hearing one, which is about the Tiburon Tourism Business Improvement District. Do we have a staff report on public hearing one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up item from the June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three item. Just a quick background, as, as you may all recall, the town formed the Tiburon Tourism Business Improvement District under a Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen eighty-nine. And it requires the town to annually reaffirm its desire to keep the assessment that it includes and to fund the marketing program that it funds. On June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the TTBID Advisory Board approved its annual report. And on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, council took the first step, adopting a resolution declaring its intent to levy and collect assessments within the bid and to use those assessments to fund the TTBID program. And at that, that resolution indicated that the public hearing for this item would, would occur tonight, August second, two thousand and twenty-three. Subsequent to the June twenty-first meeting, staff provided the appropriate notification to the affected businesses. And as of today, we have received no protest to levying the assessment again. So tonight, this is a public hearing for council to hear any testimony related to the item. And if hearing no protests and wanting to proceed, they would adopt a resolution, essentially levying the assessment for another year.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment on this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. I'll close public comment period and bring it back to the council for discussion. Anyone have any discussion on this item that has no majority protest?
None at all. I can give you a little anecdote that I ran into a visitor who got off the ferry who asked me where the historical objects or places to see were because she had seen some of the promotion for our town. So obviously, it's happening.
That's great.
Yeah.
Good to know, yeah.
Where did you send her?
I, we just stood there and.
You pointed.
To your house.
Thank you. You know, the museum is right there and St. Hillary's is visible from there, Main Street.
Lots of cool things.
So I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed resolution to collect and levy assessments to fund the TTBID program.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Vice Mayor Fredericks, all in favor of approving that? Say aye.
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 Great, that passes four zero. Thank you. Are there any town council reports this evening?
Brief one.
Okay.
Some action that I'm, I'm putting on the table for our legislative committee, which is myself and whoever's mayor. There is a bill before the legislature, ABA twenty-five, that would allow bikes on sidewalks if no bike line, lane is available on an adjacent highway or corridor. It's been amended a bit, so it's now a two-year study. However, there's still concerns about putting bikes on sidewalks, especially in business districts and, and where these parklets exist. Another problem is that the standard of infraction is ten miles per hour, which some people think is fast and other people think is unenforceable. They would like to see a general safety standard for enforcement. My suggestion is that we write a letter asking for these amendments and opposing unless amended.
Thank you.
I do have one question. Is it possible that you would entertain that we just ask for the amendments since the bills are constantly changing? There might be something else that comes out that's better?
The legislature is on recess. We'll take an appropriate position when they come back. But to have a letter there when they open telling them what action we would like them to take is important. And actually, taking a position makes the amendment you request a much stronger request.
Okay, I just, I just have some questions because where, where do the bikes go? If, if there's no bike lane and it's a busy street like Tiburon Boulevard, so I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, writing a letter in support of something that's kind of against public safety.
Okay, I can't quite follow that. The problem is having the bikes on the sidewalks where there are pedestrians. The amendments that are suggested are both the infraction, the standard of infraction, and also exemption for business districts where there's likely to be a lot of pedestrians. So for example, the letter that the Marin County Council of Mayor's and council members wrote, took examples from each of our jurisdictions. From our jurisdiction, I gave the example of people lined up on Main Street to get into the restaurants. Also, the idea that we all want senior-friendly pedestrian walkable communities, and there needs to be some kind of escape ramps from bikes on the sidewalks where this is a priority.
Okay, and who's supporting it? And who's?
The bike coalition.
And who's against it? Do you know?
The cities.
The cities.
Cal cities. I can't remember. Cal cities, I think, asked for it to be amended. It was not amended as much as they asked, although they did get it to be a two-year study instead of, yeah.
Okay, so I.
And then CCMC took the position of oppose unless amended.
Okay, so I, I personally would need more time and more research to make a decision how I stand personally. But, you know, Alice, you, I know that you know this inside it out. You've done a lot of work. I have great respect for you. If the council does want to write a letter, that is the council's prerogative. I just probably could not put my name on it right now because I just don't know enough about it.
The, the letter actually comes from the legislative committee and is signed by the mayor.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, yeah, okay. I just, I just see the safety implications on both sides because I don't know where the bikes go. But having them on the sidewalks, you know, with seniors and you know, may not be the solution, but I just don't know anything about this bill, so.
Well, there's a report from the Senate Transportation Committee that discusses that, but
Yeah, I'll say.
Need to move forward before the legislature weakens.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
And the only thing I'll trip in is, I think the answer that the bike coalition doesn't want to hear is that bikes have to, to get on the sidewalk, but they have to walk their bikes in those, in those areas.
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, I just don't want my name on it.
I hear you.
Because I, I would need to do more research to see.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other council reports this evening? Do we have a town manager report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. So at this point, we're going to go into a closed session. It is on the agenda, conference with legal counsel regarding existing legislation. Is there anybody in the public who wants to comment on this agenda item before we go into session?
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you. So I will close public comment period. And we will adjourn into closed session and come back and report when we're done. Um, and we will adjourn into closed session and come back and report when we're done.
We're bearing with us, we have nothing where there was no action that was reportable that was taken in the closed session and without the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.